I'd like to call it a order, the Monday, April 19th, 2010, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 5:30, we had a work session discussing the ordinance restricting use of sandbags and beach pushes on the Currituck Outer Banks. And at 6:00 PM, we had a discussion on drainage issues and how we can address those in the future. At this time, we have Reverend David Coxon from Powell's Point Christian Church to lead us in the invocation. Everyone, please observe that.
Would you bow and join me in prayer, please, this evening? Most gracious God and Father, first of all, thank you for the lovely day that you've given us, a lovely spring day. And Father, we're so grateful to you who guides and governs our lives with such order and diligence and love. Father, we just ask tonight that you look down upon this assembly, upon the gathering of our commissioners and community. And Father, fill us with your wisdom, that everything that's said and done may be said and done in accordance to your will and to your glory. This evening, Father, we pray especially for those who have set aside their lives to be commissioners, appointed by our county elected officials. And yet, Father, they have a very difficult challenge and task. And so, we pray for them and their families, and we just ask tonight that you would give them guidance as they make decisions. And Father, we also pray for those who provide legal counsel. Father, for those who act in any way around them to give them assistance, we pray for them as well. Lord, this evening, we also want a special prayer for the residents of Currituck County, for those this evening who've joined us, for those who may have presentations to make, requests of the commissioners. Father, I just pray that you would give them just a clear presentation. And Father, just be with them, help them to be patient in the decisions that come. Lord, I just pray now for this evening, and may everything that is said and done be said and done according to your will and to the glory of God. And for the citizens of Currituck County, Father, we just pray all these things now in the precious name of our Lord, Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Stand with me?
Yes.
Let's pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Coxon. Item one is approval of agenda. There are no amendments tonight.
It's a move.
A motion and a second. Any discussion here? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item two is public comment. We have several people signed up for different things tonight. I'll try to keep it straight. I think we have Mr. Earl and Ms. Edith Brickhouse here to give us a report from senior Tarheel activities.
Mister Chairman, fellow commissioners, residents of Currituck, North Carolina. My name is Earl. This is my wife, Edith Brickhouse. We live at 457 Cooper Garrett Road in Moayak. The North Carolina Senior Tarheel Legislative convened in Raleigh to work on legislative priorities on the coming year. This is the first of three meetings for this year. Delegates were also presented with an update of the North Carolina employment conditions and several aging issues that state leaders are planning to take to Congress next year. Charles Perouse, who is the North Carolina State Budget Director, discussed three good signs of our state employment situation. First, the unemployment rate has leveled out for the last 12 months. It has not increased, but it has not decreased. Also, the total employment rate has increased slightly. More than 10,000 new employees have been hired over the last past two months. Finally, there has been an increase in construction and manufacturing of jobs in the state. Mr. Perouse further stated, also acknowledges that there has been more reduction in the new fiscal year budget so that North Carolina can get back to the new normal economy. State leaders are in the process of gathering information for the reauthorization of the Older Americas Act. Dennis Street, Director of the North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services, addressed several topics that will be proposed to the federal government when the CAA is reauthorized, OAA is reauthorized in 2011. Street said that the local government needs more flexibility to use block grant funds to meet the growing demands of the older adult services. Currently, there are more than 14,000 people waiting for the programs such as home delivery meals, in-home aid care. State leaders also would like to see more federal support for new programs such as Project Care, care alternative to running on empty, evidence-based health promotional programs like Living Healthy and Living Healthy with Diabetes. It is estimated that by 2030, six out of 10 older adults will be living with two or more chronic health conditions. This senior Tarheel Legislature supports additional funding to sustain Project Care because of the cost-saving to the public. Through this program, caregivers can receive respite care and other supportive services so that their loved ones can remain at home rather than being placed in an institution. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to my wife.
I'd like to thank you, gentlemen and ladies, and it's nice to be back home again.
Right there.
The late afternoon session on the first day was particularly special for both the Speaker and the Senior Tarheel Legislature. And the Mr. Peg O'Connell, or Mrs. Peg O'Connell, I should say, spoke about a new initiative called the Red Tie Campaign. Mrs. O'Connell is the lovely wife of longtime North Carolina Insurance Commissioner Jim Long. Mrs. O'Connell offered some sobering statistics about strokes in North Carolina. The rate of death from strokes in our state is 10% above the national average. The rate of death in eastern North Carolina counties is 20% higher than the national average. Every year, nearly 32% of the deaths in our state proclamation that November 19th will be red tie stroke awareness date. And this is what we're hoping that with your permit and everything, that we'll have that day. That will help us all. And Governor Beverly Perdue has signed a proclamation that November 19th for that, and she wants the Honored Commissioner Long to his outstanding work with the Senior Health Insurance Information Program. The Senior Tarheel Legislature promotes citizen involvement and advocacy concerning aging issues before the General Assembly and assesses the legislative needs of older adults by convening a forum modeled after the North General Assembly. It is during these forums that the Senior Tarheel established priorities for the upcoming years. The 2010 legislative priorities for the Senior Tarheel Legislature include, one, provide funding to sustain Project Care; two, is increased funding for the home care and community block grant by $5 million; the third one is increased funding for senior centers by an additional $2 million in recurring funds; four, is establish a cap on the increase in the assessed value of property determined during revelations for persons over the age of 65 eligible for a homestead exemption; revise the limits of the Act to income of $35,000; number five is mandate pre-employment and random drug testing for employees of nursing and assisted living facilities. One delegate and one alternate represents every older adult in the state's 100 counties. Please feel free to contact your local delegate or the regional area agency on aging. In Currituck County, you can contact Delegate Edith F. Brickhouse, which I've been since a long time now. Our telephone number is (252) 435-6912, and we'll be glad to answer anything that you want to ask us for.
Anyone have any questions?
I just appreciate them that y'all take the time to go out and do this for the county and bring back the information, as well as representing us there. We appreciate the hard work you do.
Thank you, ma'am. It is our pleasure. Y'all have a fine day.
Thank you very much. What is the date for the red tie?
The 19th.
The 19th of November.
Of November.
Sorry.
We certainly...
And June, we have to be up there again, and we're June and November.
You certainly need to contact us sometime around in October so that Ms. Keen can get it on the agenda.
Freddie went to Gwen, and she said that she would get it up.
And she'll do it.
If you were able to give it to us.
We're willing. We just need it sometime in October, I guess.
I know. You gentlemen have always been very nice and very kind to us.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a Mr. Tom Franchi, but he signed up for item five. Shannon Kinzer from the chamber, let's give you name and address for the record, please.
Shannon Kinzer, 115 Catherine Drive in Harbinger. I'm actually here on public comment to talk about my role with the Currituck Wild Goose Rotary Club as president. We are having our inaugural crawl, which is Currituck Rotary Annual Wild Goose Lawn Sale, which will be from the state line to the Wright Memorial Bridge, a yard sale, basically, is what it is, to benefit projects that our Rotary Club puts on in the community, both international and our local community. So, the basic gist behind this 45, 50-mile-long yard sale is the Rotary Club has a main site at Currituck County High School. We have vendor spaces that are still available for people to sign up. You sell your items that are collecting whatever around your house, and then we ask that you, you know, give a portion of that back to the club as well. And then, there are also sponsor sites that go on throughout the county. And a list of all of those sponsors and ways to sign up as a vendor are on the website, which is the, the word, the, T-H-E dash crawl dot com. So, if you have any questions or would like to sign up to be a vendor or a sponsor, we'd love to have you, and hopefully, this will be a great event for the county and bring a lot of people into the area to shop for those hidden treasures you might otherwise have hidden in your attic. So, any questions about that? Come on out and come shopping on Saturday. It's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then there's going to be an auction down at Port Harbor at 6:00 o'clock. So, we hope to see you all there.
I'd like to make one comment about it, that this is patterned after an affair that happens over in the town of Hillsville, Virginia, each year. On Labor Day weekend, they started out, their Veterans of Foreign Wars sponsored an event back in the '60s. And it's grown to the point today that every Labor Day weekend, they draw about a half a million people to that community. It's a town of about 3,000 people. If you can imagine something, just percentage of that scale, drawing tourists into our county to kick off the spring season, that'd be a wonderful thing to get our season started. And so, we're hoping this will develop into that kind of event. And I know all of you've got a lot of stuff in your garage. If you don't, I've got plenty in mine. You can come over and get some of mine, take it out and sell it, because I know I can't haul it all over there. But we'd really like to see you out there Saturday.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Before I close the public comments, any commissioners have anything?
I had one, and I apologize, because you called me down a couple of weeks ago on it, on an article that was printed in the newspaper on Easter Sunday. And just to give you a little bit of background, those of you who don't know me, I live in Moayak, and I'm not too far from the proposed OLF site, and we have been fighting against this for over three years. And Mr. Jeff Hampton, who I've grown to know over the years, being on the Board of Education and also as a county commissioner, had called me and asked me about the impact that this would have, the loss of jobs, when the Aion Worldwide Services that's owned by ZE was sold, because a couple of years ago, this had happened. At the time, my husband owned Tim Dogs, which was a hot dog joint in Moayak. And so, and I have a business in Moayak, so he wanted to know what impact this would have of the loss of the jobs. And I know, told him that the last time, that, you know, there was a decline in the restaurants in the area and at the gas stations, because the people who worked there, if they didn't live in Moayak or in Currituck, they would stop here and spend their money for gas and food to get back and forth. Along with that, I made the comment to him that I was very concerned, if they were selling this, that this now left empty hangers and empty runway. And he said, people have alluded to that, but nobody has actually came out and said that. Do you mind if I quote you on that? And I said, that's fine. By reading the paper, people have been misled that I meant that, oh, yeah, I'm excited because the OLF now has a place to come. No, it scares me to death because it's out my back door, something that we have spent money on, time on, a fight that we are fighting every day. It scares me, the thought that they are coming back to have the possibility to go back there to ZE. So, I just wanted to put that out there. People who know me were still like, okay, we understood, but we had to read it twice to understand. But I just wanted to clarify that, that I, along with my fellow board members, have been fighting this for over three years. As a matter of fact, we've had letters going back and forth in the past week. Chairman O'Neill has been sending letters back to Chesapeake and to Virginia Beach, concerned about how they are not considering the people in Currituck County when they sit out there and they talk about us, but they do not allow us to interact. The Admiral from the Navy was down here last month, did not notify any public officials from Currituck County, Pasquattank, or Camden that they were here. And by the people, you have empowered us to say no to the OLF. And we are not going to let you down. I'm not going to let you down. And I just want to make that clear to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on?
Does that mean you're against the OLF? Just to clarify that. Okay.
I do want to ask the county manager, while it's early in the meeting, before people have cut it off in disgust or whatever, or gone to sleep, about the budget. As we're preparing forward for the budget, we adopt it in June, and it takes effect in July. Can you give us a little preliminary and the citizens what they can expect this year out of our budget?
Yes, sir. Well, I guess I'll start...
Good news first.
Excuse me?
Give us good news first.
Then I'm done. I believe everybody, just by pick up any newspaper on any given day, and there's at least one article in there about a local jurisdiction that is struggling with the economy and the effects of the economy as they try to put together a local budget. And we certainly are not going to be immune from that. The downturn in the economy is having an impact on Currituck County. We were fortunate in this current budget year to be able to get through without having too much impact on personnel and services. It's going to be a struggle to be able to get through that next year at the same level. The impact the economy is having on our citizens, the amount of foreclosures we're seeing, we're expecting about a half a million dollar decrease in property tax collections this year, and we're projecting to have at least that much next year. And of course, property tax is our largest revenue source. We are in about our 13th straight month of decreasing in sales tax collections. That is our second-largest revenue, and that equates to probably, we're pushing about a million dollars plus less in sales tax collection than we have historically received. At the same time, we're all feeling the pressure of health coverage. We're expecting a significant increase in just some premiums for our employees. We were put on notice by the state, the impact of the investment on retirement funds. We're getting a significant increase in our mandatory contributions to retirements. That's going to be about a $240,000 increase. So, before we even look at anything, we're experiencing probably a million, million and a half dollar decrease in revenue, but probably three-quarters of a million dollar increase in expenditures that we know we're obligated to pay. We're very fearful of when the General Assembly goes back into session. Last year, when they went in session, they passed on to local government several services that have historically been funded by the state, child support enforcement being one of those, and we discussed that at our last meeting. That is going to have an impact on our budget next year. We do have to pick that up. That could be as much as $50,000 to $100,000 impact by having to pick that service up. So, we are going to have a, probably one of the tightest budgets and more difficult budgets put together than we've experienced in quite some time. Our goal, of course, as provided by the Board of Commissioners, is that, and we all know this is a terrible time, to look at any kind of fee increase, tax increases, so we're not contemplating anything along those lines, but it will have an impact on services. At this point in time, I do not see or do not anticipate that we will be in a position where we're talking about laying off employees or having to furlough. So, I don't think we're going to get that deep into budgets, but there's probably no way you can get through a balanced budget in this economic climate without having some impact on services. We do our best to make sure that our core services are not impacted, but we certainly have some room around the edges to look at where we can consolidate programs, where we can do some cost savings, and we certainly are exploring those measures now. Staff anticipates that we probably need another two to three weeks to get the budget into a balanced format to bring forward to the commissioners, so sometime, hopefully, earlier than mid-May, we'll start scheduling our work sessions with the Board of Commissioners. As you mentioned, we will have to have our public hearing in June, and hopefully, the Board will be positioned to adopt something. So, it is going to be a challenging budget. It's going to be a difficult budget. For years, when the sun was shining and things were going well, we took a lot of heat for the reserves that we used to maintain, but it is those reserves, one of the main reasons why you keep these reserves, is to try to help balance out through tough economic times, and that has fared well for us for the last year. The challenge, I guess, is we haven't seen financially, we have not seen us bottom out. I would feel a lot more comfortable as your budget officer, that if sales tax would at least level out at some level, where we could say, it's not going to get worse than this. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we haven't seen that. It continues to just freefall. On the good side, I guess, if there is good news, we are hearing a lot of positive feeling from a lot of the folks on the Outer Banks, the business community, property managers. There is a lot, at this point in time compared to last year, there is, bookings are up. There's a lot of optimism that we are going to have a productive summer compared to the last couple summers. But we have to keep in mind that, you know, just because the folks don't, the folks come here doesn't necessarily mean that they will be spending money. Hopefully, they'll come down and we'll see some, a little more positive information about the economy, and folks will feel more inclined to spend. But it is going to be a challenging budget, and we are working through it. But it's probably the most challenging one that we've faced in the last 20-plus years.
Mister Chairman? Thank you. Yes, sir?
I could follow up on what Mr. Scanlon just said. I served on statewide committee for the Association of County Commissioners, and we had a meeting in Raleigh two weeks ago. And the talk was that the budget shortfall that the state's looking at just to complete to July or June 30th this year is anywhere from $700 million to $1.2 billion. And I believe Senator Bassnight this morning at a meeting we attended said $800 and some million dollars, I know they were sure, Representative Spear. And Senator Bassnight said it's going to be cuts in services. Now, how many of those services they're going to push down again this year on local governments is unknown at this time, but that, it's going to be tough, like you said, and we already see the storm clouds gathering on the horizon, and how we're going to have to handle these things.
And I did ask, our departments have all submitted their budgets to us, and my direction to them is, when they prepare their individual department budgets, is they need to look at a 5% decrease over last year's. And I think our departments have done an excellent job. They understand the financial and the economy that we're in. Most of them have done a good job. Some can't quite get there, but all of them have come in with some level of decrease over the previous years. We've also asked some of the nonprofits that we're dealing with, some of the larger groups we're funding, have also done the same kind of thing. One of the big fears that we have when the General Assembly goes back in is roads are still on the table. We've been playing defense on this for some time. There has been some conversation about how far in the whole NCDOT is, and they are looking for revenue sources to try to build them out because they have a funding issue. As we often, driving around in Currituck County, you certainly can see that and tell that. But one of the things on the table is conversations about pushing secondary roads, the maintenance of secondary roads down to local governments. If that was to happen to us, you're talking about a significant tax increase in Currituck County to be able to accommodate that. So, that is still in play. We're told by our representatives that they will do everything they can to protect county government. But as we also learned this morning with the change of the census and the change in the demographics of state of North Carolina, the political winds are changing more to the urban areas, and rural areas are going to be at the, I guess, a disadvantage when it comes to looking at what the state government does for us. I think Representative Spears told us, I think he said it probably as clear as any, is Mr. Spears represents a handful of county governments in northeastern North Carolina, I think it was four, I think he said, where the city of, county of Wake has got nine representatives in Wake County alone. So, you can see the imbalance that is just going to be further perpetuated by the census. So, we're going to be at a disadvantage for quite some time, and it's going to be a challenge for us to map our course, but it's certainly a challenge I think we're up for.
Thank you. Here are no one else. I'm going to move to, I'm going to close the public comment and move to item three. We're fortunate to have with us tonight Ms. Patricia Youngblood from Admiral Hope Line. She's been there several years, done a wonderful job, and served a lot of people here in Currituck County. And we had the breakfast, I guess it's been about a month ago, the annual breakfast, and I asked her to come and share with us a few minutes with our citizens, a little bit about it. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. As you know, Hope Line, and I know you said for a few years, but actually, Hope Line has been serving Currituck County for over 28 years. And during that time, and I've been the director of Hope Line for most of that time, so we've established a history over time of serving the citizens of your county. To let you know, just in the past year, we shared a few of these statistics at the breakfast, but I wanted to share them with you, because I think when you talk about victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, a great amount of time goes into each, serving each of those victims. So, statistics only speak a little bit to what we actually do with each person who comes to our agency. But in 2009, we served 199 unduplicated domestic and sexual violence victims and provided 448 shelter nights, conducted over 1,000 shelter counseling, where the counseling services, provided 1,403 advocacy services, answered 981 crisis calls, and presented 79 prevention through education programs, and held a Currituck candlelight vigil during Domestic Violence Month. Those are statistics, just a few for Currituck County. That's in addition to information and referral and all of the other things that we do through our office here in Currituck County, but also through our shelter in Elizabeth City. We asked the county commissioners to consider providing $25,000 in funding to help support what we provide. We kept that request in view of the very things that you all were talking about tonight, and how difficult times are. We kept that request in line with last year at the same, even though we know that in very difficult times, unfortunately, when money goes down, stressors go up, and unfortunately, our business goes up with it. As I left tonight, I mean, I know we can look at stats, and I know you can think about statistics, but as I left tonight, our shelter was full and overfull, and we had people really waiting to be in there. I mean, that's a very sad state of affairs, and that's not anything you can feel or see in a statistic. But we know that Currituck County has partnered with us for many years and has been a wonderful support of what we do, and a wonderful support ultimately of the victims of domestic and sexual violence in this county. And we're hoping that, again, you will partner. We do everything we can to raise... We do everything we can to raise money through grants, through our thrift store, through, if I can make a pitch, we're having our duck race again this year, so if you haven't adopted a duck, adopt a duck, okay? And do anything, we do anything we can in order to help support the services we provide to all counties, but we're asking that you, again, will partner with us so that we can continue to serve at the levels of previous years or even higher, because I think that's what it's going to take, unfortunately, this year. You know, I always wished we could go out of business, but unfortunately, I don't see that happening, so if it's not, I think everybody has to join hands in making it safe for our families and safe for our community. I appreciate the time you've given me, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
You mentioned a shelter. How many beds or units do you have, or how many people can you accommodate in a shelter?
Since we've moved to the new building, we can, we have nine bedrooms. We can really, we really have 30 beds, and we can add some additional, you know, cot-type accommodations also if we need to, but comfortably, we can put 30 women and children in there. But that's, you know, the bedrooms, and they have a full kitchen, children's playroom, a play yard, everything that someone would have in a family, you know, of their own. And we try to make it as safe and as comfortable and as conducive to healing and growing and being able to have a safe life.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say I thank you all very much for what you do and the services that you provide for all of northeastern North Carolina. It's, when people are in need, you're there for them, and I commend you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do to help us help others. Thank you very much.
And as people at home or in the audience are ever looking for a cause where your dollars will have impact on somebody's life immediately, this is one that you certainly should look at, and Ms. Youngblood is, make sure the money is spent properly, and they really do great work, and I encourage you to check them out. They really do a great job, and we appreciate you providing that service here in Currituck as well as all of northeast North Carolina.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item four, Public Hearing in Action, PB 10-10, Currituck Chamber of Commerce, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Overlay Districts, to allow the display of sandwich board and real estate signs in Corolla year-round. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment request. It was proposed by the Currituck County Chamber of Commerce, and what's before you tonight is a request to allow what's called sandwich board signs and real estate signs year-round in the Corolla area. Sandwich board signs are currently defined as temporary commercial signage, which is allowed from October to May, so basically, it's allowed in the off-season. You can see in the photograph there, there's an example of some sandwich board signs in front of the Timbuktu Shopping Center. During the off-season, each business unit within a shopping center or commercial area is allowed to have one sandwich board sign per unit, not to exceed six square feet in size. And also, one thing that's part of this request as well is the idea of real estate signs, and those are, again, six-square-foot signs that are located in front of offices or businesses in the off-season, and they promote or have messages such as "Open House" or "Agent on Duty" or "Open." Those are also only allowed in the off-season currently. So you've got kind of two parts of this request as it relates to signage. The chamber's requesting to allow the signs year-round as temporary, as a temporary solution to assist businesses in this current economic climate. In their application, the chamber also noted that they would also like to explore a more permanent, long-term option as part of the UDOT rewrite to assist businesses with visibility issue. So again, the chamber's proposing the allowance of sandwich board signs and real estate signs year-round as kind of a temporary solution to assist the businesses over there. A little bit of history, and I'm sure some other folks can cover this better than I can, as they were part of this process, but the current sign ordinance was adopted on July 16th of 2007, so the ordinance is in place, and there is a separate ordinance for Corolla versus the mainland, so they have a separate sign ordinance over there, adopted in 2007. The ordinance was primarily prepared by Corolla citizens and members of the business community at the time, and when it was adopted, it represented a compromise, and that's actually in the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners. Obviously, as with any ordinance or planning document, some type of evaluation and periodic updates are needed. That's certainly something that I think staff will always explore, is what parts of ordinances are or are not working. The Planning Board heard this request at their March 9, 2010 meeting. The Planning Board recommended denial of this. Some of the reasons that came up for, as part of the reasoning for denial at that point or during that meeting was, one, that the addition of temporary sandwich board signs may exacerbate public safety issues during the summer, and another issue that came up, which is kind of the idea of consistency with the land use plan, and that's the fact that sometimes with the additional temporary signage, you may be creating a cluttered roadside, and I think in the Corolla area, aesthetics are always a concern, that being a resort area, and that is in land use plans. That was part of the, kind of the two reasons that came up during the Planning Board meeting. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm sure the folks in the audience can probably give some additional background as well.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Woody?
I have one. Of the roadside area that's up along Route 12, which is where we're talking about, how much of that area up there is subject to the placement of these signs, looking at the overall road frontage as a base?
Well, all the commercial areas are.
How much commercial area is there along Route 12 compared to the?
I can't answer that question. I mean, there's approximately 150 businesses, maybe, so you.
Does anybody know, I mean, is this going to be like this all up and down Route 12, or?
We'll get to the audience here in just a minute.
It says in the presentation.
Okay.
All right, well, get an answer to that, too, then, okay? That's what I was concerned about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, as far as, wouldn't restrictive covenants of some of these commercial sites or developments, wouldn't they play a part in this as well? I mean, as to what's allowable, what's not?
Not from the county's decision-making process, but in their own order associations, they could. Obviously, that's up to the members of that association, so it's possible, yes.
So in other words, if Timbuktu, for instance, had a stricter policy than the county had, then that would prevail?
That's the case with any zoning requirement of the county.
Yeah.
But the county can't enforce restrictive covenants.
Right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, what is the purpose of the land use plan?
To promote orderly growth and development in Currituck County.
Enhance quality of life.
That, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. As an example, Timbuktu, there's how many businesses in there?
Approximately 60.
60?
Approximately.
Okay, let's say there's 30. If there was 30 in there, would all 30 of those businesses under this proposal be allowed to put a sign out there?
They could.
Okay. And before we get it to the public hearing, I just want to go ahead and get something on the record. There's an email that's been going around in Corolla, once again misquoting me for about the fourth or fifth issue, saying that Paul O'Neill has promised to overturn the sign ordinance with all his power and might. I can't give you the exact quote, but I do wish that whoever continues to send these emails out quoting me would call me, and I'll give you a good quote, but don't misquote me and say that I have said something I have never said in public, private, to a newspaper or to my Labrador Retriever. I have not told anybody that I was going to overturn this sign ordinance with whatever power quote that I have, and as I said, this is about the third or fourth issue where I get quoted with stuff that I have not said, and it stirs people up and creates a climate where people get angry over things that have not been said, and responsible grown adults need to stop doing it. Thank you.
You against the way of life, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't agree with the way of life these days.
Yes. All right. I'm going to, anybody else have any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. First, we have Shannon Kinzer from Currituck Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Chairman, is your intention of time, please?
Yes, three minutes.
Thank you.
And Mr. McCray will be in charge of the time, and when you come forward, please restate your name and your address so Ms. King can have a record of it. Thank you.
I did not send that email, Mr. Chairman. I just want to get that on the table there.
I know you did not.
Shannon Kinzer, I'm President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce. My address, once again, is 115 Katherine Drive in Harbinger. I'm here on behalf of approximately 70 member businesses in Corolla and various number of non-member businesses to request an amendment to the Outer Banks Overlay Sign Ordinance with regards to sandwich board signs. The text amendment request is not to change the existing ordinance as it relates to the size, style, or placement of these signs, but rather to lift the date restrictions currently in place. We believe that not allowing business owners to keep these signs in place during the season costs them valuable exposure, resulting in lost sales to the business and lost revenues to the county. The Corolla tourist season peaks for eight weeks, from mid-June to mid-August. Currently, the sandwich boards must be removed for 22 weeks of the year, from May 1st through September 30th. As a weekly vacation destination, business owners have less than one week to educate visitors as to where they are and what they sell. They must re-educate guests each week. Through traditional advertising methods, this would be extremely costly and arguably ineffective. Vacationers also face a strong pull from shops and duck, Kitty Hawk, and other Dare County shopping and dining opportunities. These charts show sales tax revenue for Currituck and Dare Counties just during the months of May through September from 2006 to 2009. As you can see, sales tax collections in Currituck County have decreased significantly, as Mr. Scanlon mentioned earlier, from $4.87 million in 2008 to $4.1 million in 2009, which was a 15% decrease. For the same period, in Dare County, sales tax revenue increased from $33 million to $34.78 million, a 5% increase. According to the North Carolina Division of Tourism, Film and Sports Development, tourism economic impact in Currituck County dropped 6.1% from $120 million to $112 million from 2007 to 2008. This was the second-largest decline in the state of all 100 counties. Alternatively, Dare County saw a 1.9% increase in economic impact from $762 million in 2007 to $777 million in 2008. Economic impact measures spending, employment, payroll, business receipts, and tax revenues generated specifically by traveler spending. A 2007 study performed by Randall Travel Marketing for Currituck County asked visitors about their satisfaction with several amenities. These consultants deemed that the amenity ranking lower than a 4.00 was considered a failure. Three of these amenities were signage and wayfinding, variety of shopping and merchandise, and range of choices for dining. According to the Department of Tourism, there are 61 restaurants in Corolla and 59 retail businesses. With the rankings below 4.00 for these areas, we wonder if visitors were unable to find these opportunities while they were here. According to the study, with regards to the signage failure alone, Randall Travel Marketing states, this is a quote, "This is a failure that costs local residents considerable revenues and tax relief." Local elected officials," this is a quote, "local elected officials need to understand the connection between properly facilitating visits and increased economic impact."
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
How much more you got?
Just a couple more slides, not much.
Go ahead, you're doing a presentation.
Okay. I didn't realize there was a time limit, I'm sorry. "Appropriate signage that leads travelers to meeting places, dining, shopping, and other services and product venues will undoubtedly result in greater spending. Research has documented repeatedly that if a traveler knows facilities such as shopping and dining areas are available, they will stop and spend." That's the end of the quote.
Shannon?
Yes.
Let me explain. You are the applicant.
Yes.
You have your presentation. You're not constrained by the three minutes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I can slow down now. What would be the impact of allowing sandwich boards all year? NC 12, this answers Mr. Rohr's question. NC 12 in Corolla is 13 miles from the county line to the beach access ramp. Of that 13 miles, a total of only one mile is commercial road frontage where signs may be placed, so one mile out of the 13 miles is available for these signs. Not only does that leave a small area, which is 8% of NC 12, for businesses to advertise their location, but seems insignificant as far as disrupting the natural beauty that exists along the remaining 12 miles of highway. The Planning Board and staff stated an inconsistency with the policy objectives of the 2006 land use plan when recommending denial of the amendment request. These two policies, CA 4 and CD 9, speak to appearance and standards, neither of which we are asking to change. While the ability to leave signs out during the summer months could increase the number of signs, the regulations regarding sign size, appearance, and limitations on placement would remain. If the signs are not out of sync with the land use plan in November, why are they out of sync in August? Keep in mind that shopping centers such as Timbuktu and Monterey Plaza could impose greater restrictions in the county in order to limit the number of signs in front of each shopping center. Though the Currituck Chamber of Commerce represents business interests, we also have several nonprofits as members. The Wellhead Club has stated that when putting up extra signs for their wine festivals and concerts, more visitors come to those events. The Corolla Wild Horse Funds Museum receives countless statements from visitors that they never knew the historic village was back there before they put up their sandwich sign. Karen Gresham at the Bank of Currituck in Corolla submitted a statement about their Relay for Life bake sale. She states that "In order to increase sales, a couple of years ago, we put a small tent sign out front to raise awareness of our bake sales. This has helped us to raise additional money for Relay." We can only have this sign up until the end of April, and our bake sales continue through May. This sign has brought in a number of tourists into the branch to purchase our baked goods. Without the use of this sign, there is little or no awareness that a bake sale is going on. We could be raising more money for this cause, but we are limited because of the Corolla sign ordinance. Another important area affected by this ordinance and thus part of our amendment request is the "Open House, Agent on Duty, and Open" signs for realty offices. Since many people end up buying investment or retirement property in the place where they vacation, it only makes sense for these companies to be able to advertise their properties for sale during the season when people are here. In closing, the Currituck Chamber of Commerce does not see sandwich boards as a permanent addition to the Corolla landscape, but merely an easy way for businesses to drive traffic through the doors this season. We feel that something needs to be done to keep those dollars from leaking into Dare County, and we ask the Board of Commissioners to help us give owners an opportunity to effectively advertise their business to the thousands of vacationers that are here each week. Thank you for your time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kinzer. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Kinzer? Guess not. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have Ms. Alicia McDonald.
My name is Alicia McDonald. I live at 965 Sunset Crescent in Corolla. Mr. O'Neill, I think that you might be referring to my email, and I was quoting from Jeff Hampton. Now, maybe I got my words. You had a comment to Jeff Hampton in the Virginia Pilot about doing all in your power, or all you could do, and I might have added the word "power," and if I've added "power" without your permission, I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to say any names.
Well, I forget, I had to, enough to it.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to begin by saying, this is sort of deja vu. April of 2003, I represented the Sign Committee from Corolla, along with the then-president of the chamber, Willow Kelly. Commissioner O'Neill asked us to work together to review the 1990 sign ordinance that was written by the then-developers of Corolla, Richard Brinley, Buck Thornton, and Doug Twitty. They envisioned Corolla as a resort area similar to Hilton Head. They, in fact, hired a man, a former commissioner for Manio, to go to Hilton Head, bring back the sign ordinance, and they wrote a four-page restrictive sign ordinance that was in effect from the 1990s to 2003, actually, 2007. In that ordinance is the date of the sandwich signs, coming down May 1st and going back October 1st. It was not something that we put in, we just kept it. It was a compromise. We had no big objections from anybody on the committee, and I would like to present to you a chart of the 30 people who worked for four years, one meeting a week, three hours, for four years. one meeting a week, three hours, for four years to get this sign ordinance approved in July of 2007. I also have a copy of the original 1990 ordinance, if anybody would care to look at it. We truly made, with all the people, we truly felt we had come up with a comprehensive ordinance. Now, what I need to clarify here is that NC-12 cannot be compared to the Currituck Corridor of 168-158, nor can it be compared to the bypass in Dare County. It is a two-lane road with only 8% of the 13 miles being commercial because the PUDs bring the residential area right out to NC-12. So, you have on either side of NC-12, the 10 feet that DOT owns, and then the residential area box it. So, in order to have off-premise signs, business communities would have to go to the Currituck Club, Pine Island, Monterey Shores, Corolla, and say, "Can we put signs on your private property for our businesses?" So, there would be something that they would have to discuss about the restrictive covenants inside those five PUDs. The only place that's not a PUD is Corolla Village. And in Corolla Village, where the wild horse people have their museum in the back, it was R-01, and it was rezoned to commercial, and the Board of Commissioners allowed Mr. Twitty to put a very lovely, well-done sign saying "Corolla Village" with an arrow, fine shops, chapel, restaurants. So, he realized, and the Commissioners at that time realized, that not everybody can front NC-12 because of the way the PUDs were developed. So, what we're seeing here right now is that many factors are entering into the sign ordinance since 2007. And as Mr. Scanlon pointed out, one of the big things is the economy. Since 2008, the United States has been in recession, but people will still vacation in Corolla. It showed $400,000 of increased tourist
Time, Mr. Chairman.
... tax last night of 2009. Many of the visitors to Corolla are repeat visitors. They've taken the horse tours. They've gone up the lighthouse. They've gone to the Whalehead Club. So, some of these things that are problems with the economy are also problems because many of the renters are repeat renters. But one of the things I would like to also talk about is, the sign ordinance is really not the bad guy. The bad guys are the economy and competition. In bed, if you would put up that first set of pictures, in 2007, there were three horse tours. Now, there are nine. In 2007, there were three pizza shops. There are now six. Three ice cream shops, now six. One major food store, now two. One wings, now two. One rental equipment shop, now five. One bait and tackle shop, now three. The Fun Park wants to get in on the motor arcade and the arcade that's behind Timbuktu. It's competition. It's the American way. It's capitalism. So, just like the Corolla Resort, they want to build a hotel to get in on the dollars from the Hampton Inn and the Corolla Inn. On March 9th, the Planning Board denied the request for sandwich signs all year long. On March 10th, winds gusted in Corolla to 40 miles an hour. The enforcement officer Jenny Newbrun and I went out. 14 of the 18 signs on NC-12 were knocked over. There is a problem for the county with these signs being out. Enforcement, signs, many signs are more than six square feet. Many signs are not professional in appearance. Many signs are not true sandwich signs. Many signs are secured with sandbags, steaks, and cinder blocks. All right? And there are signs in the right-of-way, there are signs in NC-DOT property, and there are signs on private property. Now, Ms. Kinzer had told me that approximately 70 of the 155 businesses in Corolla belong to the Chamber. I have before here a list of advertisement books. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay? In one, OBX coupons, only 17 of the 155 businesses advertise. Passport to Savings, 18. The Coast, six. North Beach Sun, 35, I'm sorry, six. And there's seven Corolla Realities. Sunny Days, 32. And the OBX visitor, 35. On 158-168 corridor right now, the billboards that advertise for Corolla are eight. Seven of them are businesses that have businesses in Duck and in Dare County, and that's why they conclude Corolla, such as Pizzazz Pizza, Harris Tita, Sound Feet, Brew Through, Kitty Hawk Kites, Cotton Gin, Try My Nuts, and the Eggshead Hammocks. There's only one true billboard for Corolla, and that's the Whalehead Club. Now, on 158, there are 13 empty billboards that tourists driving south could visualize as they come down 158 as they head to Corolla. Why hasn't the business community or the Chamber rented these billboards and isolated "Shop at these fine stores at Timbuktu, sponsored by Currituck Chamber of Commerce," and list them? There are 13 commercial opportunities right there to give somebody income on the mainland, plus bolster their business. Many times, you have to spend money to make money. In Corolla right now, there are 66, I'm sorry, six empty storefronts that face NC-12. Two of Gary's shops in Timbuktu, where he closed his shops down, have already been rented. If you have the right business, and you draw the right kind of people, and you have the right prices, people will come. But in this day and age, it's selective shopping. It's selective browsing. They'll go on vacation, but maybe they won't eat out as much. Sandwich signs and the sign ordinance can't do anything about that. But what I would like to just point out is that, don't make the sandwich sign the bad guy, or the sign ordinance the bad guy. We worked four years on this. We were complimented by the Planning Board that we wrote one of the best signs, as amateurs wrote one of the best signs, best ordinances the county has. And I think business need to advertise, you need to be in the right business, you need to not over-expand, and you need to just be patient. Economic downturns have happened all the time, and they bounce back. Remember all the good years when you were the only surf shop, or the only bait shop, or the only pizza shop? You would hear the gambler talk about what he calls, when he wins, or his profits. These businesses have had profits, were all in a downturn. Just be patient, and please don't throw four years of hard work out. And concluding, I'd just like to show you a picture of Ocean Annie's. Ocean Annie's was one of the first high-end stores in Monterey Plaza, 14 years, visible from NC-12. The economy has forced Ocean Annie's to close. So, it's not the sign ordinance, it's not sandwich signs. There are many other factors. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Just the ground rules. Consider Ms. Kinzer's presentation as a presentation, and Ms. McDonald's as a counter-presentation. Going forward is three minutes.
Okay.
Okay? So...
Well, but I gave her my three minutes.
You did?
Yes.
And you are?
Corneille, I'll wind up with her.
Okay.
Are there any questions, gentlemen? Or am I...
Anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one.
Oh. Mr. Idlin has one.
Ms. Alicia?
Yes, sir.
Would... I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, but also hear the other side. And I've received numerous emails in the last couple of days, as many for as against. And, I mean, you know, this is a tough issue.
I understand.
And I would like to see a win-win situation come out of this some kind of way. And if we could do a temporary thing of some kind, that don't do away with the old sign ordinance, but allow some flexibility until the economy does turn, or until the newly-established Sign Committee is able to come up with some frameworks with the new people that's going to be on it. I mean, wouldn't that be a common-sense approach to this thing?
I guess, I guess. I just know from having young people in my family who are very tech-savvy, when they need to find a business, or a pizza shop, or what's playing at the movies, they go to their iPhone or their computer, and they put in Danbury, Connecticut Movie Theater. Punch it in, pull up the Times, they get in their car, they put in the GPS, Danbury, Connecticut, 10 White Street, and off they go. People are very, very savvy in this day and age as to where they want to go, what they want to spend, and how they want to shop. So, yes, maybe there is a compromise here, but I just want to defend the thing that I worked four years on.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corneille, you say you...
Yes.
My name is Rachel Schroed. I live at 1205 Bismarck in Corolla. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Although I wasn't on the original Sign Committee, my husband John was, so I'm really aware of all the work and the commitment, and what went into the Sign Committee, and how it ended. And they started in 2003 with 30 people on this committee, and it was mandated by Commissioner O'Neill and the residents and the business community with the advice of the Planning Department. This sign ordinance was written. And what they came up with was basically a set of compromises for the business and compromises by the Corolla, basically residential, community. And for the businesses, the sandwich signs may stay out 365 days a year, as long as they're not on Route 12. So, if they can have them back, but they can't have them on Route 12. Each business may have one open flag, but it must be secured to a post or to the building. Each business may have one open neon sign to be turned off when the business is closed. Awning signs were legalized. On-premise freestanding signs were increased from 48 square feet to 72 square feet. And to my knowledge, not one of those has been utilized. Nothing has been increased. Business wall signs were increased from 32 square feet to 48 square feet. Again, to my knowledge, not one of them has been increased. Two model or open flag signs are now allowed at new developments. Those are seven compromises for business. The compromises for the Corolla community were on-premise freestanding signs were lowered from eight feet to six feet. A list of prohibited signs includes whirligigs, balloons, pennants, banners, inflatable signs, and digital signs. And three, billboards, roof signs, and suspended signs were prohibited for safety reasons. Mr. Woody showed the picture of the sandwich signs at Timbuktu. Those are the only decent ones we have. The rest of them are a disaster. They're here, yon, back and forth, homemade, bad, fall over, never taken down when the businesses aren't open, and they're only supposed to be up when the businesses are open. It's... I don't know. To me, it's just a silly thing. I live in an area where there are rentals all around me. I'm a full-time resident, I've been there 19 years. I have watched the difference in the renters that come in. The pizza, no longer do the trucks come in and deliver pizza. They don't go out in the evening. They cook out. They're not going. All the sandwich signs in the world are not going to give these people dollars to eat out. Corolla is high-dollar eating out. It's high-dollar everything. And in a bad economy, people don't have the money. That's just the bottom line. We're just going to have to tough it through, like I am. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I was going to just pass up my time right now, but...
Can you name an address, so you're official?
Ed McCarthy, 1216 Coral Lane, Corolla. And Bonnie and I have been down here for full-time about 12 years. I wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could. You know, like I said, I was going to pass up my three minutes here, but being Irish, I'm going to try and squeeze everything in. It was interesting watching the numbers that were put up by the Chamber people, and I just happened to notice that on their logo, they have roughly the same background as the Currituck County logo, which is a flying goose on there. And everybody has heard about killing the golden goose. But looking at the numbers between 2007, '08, and '09, watching them drop, I would like you to just consider, maybe the idea is, with the economy going down, and the way that we're over-populating our development at this point, maybe those numbers are dropping as a combination between our economic backgrounds and our environment, plus maybe the fact that we are starting to strangle that poor goose. And this may just be the beginning of the iceberg. I certainly hope not. But I just want you to think about that one for a couple of minutes. And that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie McCarthy. I live at 1216 Coral Lane. I was one of the original members on the Sign Committee and stuck with it through all those years, partially at your request, sir. I have great concerns for the aesthetic and safety of Corolla. I had two grandchildren that spent the summer with me, that worked, that I had to pick up at 10 o'clock at night. The traffic, the safety hazards along Route 12 are extreme in the summer. And I always, when I got home after picking up the girls, kind of took a sigh and said, "Boy, I didn't hit anybody, thank heavens." Well, today I was out, and I knew I was coming here, so there wasn't much traffic, and I made a point of trying to read the sandwich signs as I drove. I was driving well below the speed limit. I could not read them without being an absolute hazard on the road. I'm not a tourist. I've been coming down here since 1980. I know that road well, and I was a hazard trying to pay attention to them. That is a great concern to me, when you add the wind factor and the idea that nobody's going to run out and pick these up when we have a wind of 50 miles an hour. That is another concern that I have. And one of my biggest concerns is the aesthetic value of Corolla. I have had a rental house in Corolla since 1980. I have kept in touch with the people that rented my house. I kept a book in. The comments changed in the last few years. People that had been coming for the wonderful, non-commercial atmosphere of Corolla had started to disappear, and they didn't like it. Now, I'm not saying that those people have not been repl... Now, I'm not saying that those people have not been replaced by someone else, but possibly they have been replaced by people that don't have as much discretionary money to spend. And I think it's just a very delicate balance, and I hope that you all consider that balance when you make your decision here. My personal opinion is sandwich board signs are, first of all, a menace to the community; second of all, they are a deterrent to the business in Corolla. Thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to listen to me.
Thank you. Jessica Weimer?
I take your time for my husband Earl Weimer.
Oh, I knew it was Weimer, and I said Weimer, I'm sorry. Okay, Earl?
My name is Earl Weimer. I live at 1125 Persimmon in the Village of Corolla. And I've got a little handout. I'm going to address the effectiveness of sign boards, so...
You can give them to them, and they'll send them right around.
Okay. Here we go. Now, this is a, was prepared by the United States Sign Council. These are recommendations for the size of signs for effectiveness. And I've highlighted the speed of 35 miles an hour and 45 miles an hour. And I'll wait till everybody gets one. I've highlighted 35 miles an hour, and the recommended size for an effective sign is 98 square feet. And at 45, it's 162. We have, we are allowed to have six square feet. When you're making, when I had a sign made for our church, and at 45 miles an hour, the minimum size lettering has to be 10 inches. Anything smaller than three inches looks like a blur. And you can see the time. At 35 miles an hour, you have six, eight seconds to observe a sign. Now, that picture that was shown of Timbuktu, that was taken in the spring when a lot of shops didn't have their signs up. But if you drive down there right now, you can, there's just no way that you can see any of those signs. You can't read them, and I know which stores are there, and I know what the names are and everything, and I can't read them. Of course, I'm 71 years old, but that's beside the point. And so, signs, the signs out there now are extremely ineffective. And the Deer County doesn't allow, I mean, the Deer County stores, Southern Shores, Duck, Kitty Hawk, Kill Devil Hills, Nag's Head, do not allow sign boards, signs in their ordinance. And so, they've, they've accepted the fact that they're, they're not effective. It's, like Alicia said, it's a, it's an economic situation. And, and I'd like to reiterate, I was on the original, people that were on the sign board committee, and, I mean, the sign committee, and I stuck it out to the very end, and we worked very hard. And at the beginning of the discussion, this sign board issue was, was very much an issue. There were people on there that wanted the signs out 365 days a year, and there were people on there that wanted them completely eliminated. Actually, I was one of those that wanted them completely eliminated. But that's when I only had lived here a couple of years. I've lived here eight years now. And in the wintertime, those of us who live there, there's only, you know, several hundred of us that live over there, we appreciate it because then we can see what sign, what, what shops are open, and when, and what time they're open and all that kind of thing. And so, we kind of appreciate that. We don't have to drive down there, get out of our car when it's raining or snowing, whatever it does here in the wintertime, and, and go in and find that shop is closed. So we kind of appreciate that, and we're, and there's not a lot of tourists that are not going to come back because the place looks junky. Now, I was at the meeting that the county had to address the billboards on the mainland, and the mainland actually realizes that the signs are an issue for making a community look junky. And so, we would like to keep, I mean, I might be prejudiced, but I feel that the outer banks of Corolla are really special. And, and they have to be special because the rents we receive for the same-sized house are considerably more in Corolla than they are in Kill Devil Hills. If you have a Kitty Hawk box in Corolla, you get a lot more money for it than you get for, per week than you get for a Kitty Hawk box down in Kitty Hawk. So, that's an economic issue. It's going to be a major consideration for the taxes, the taxes received, because the occupancy tax and the sales taxes on that are considerably more. And those figures that were presented for the, the taxes received, that includes the mainland. That's not just taxes that are, sales taxes that are received on the outer banks, and there's been several major businesses that have closed in the last year on the mainland. For instance, one, there's a car dealership that's not in business anymore. And, and I'm sure that all the used car sales over there are way down because the economy. And so, those figures that have, the tax figures have not been broken out for the beach or for the mainland. So, that's a consideration that we have to, it's not that huge deficit in, in sales taxes, not just from the beach. And the, I've got some slides just to show what the pictures, I mean, what the community looks like over there. The first slide is, that's not it.
I'm waiting for it.
Oh, you're waiting for it. Okay. The first one is Monterey Shores and their signage, which has been sold to tenants. Now, these are PUDs, and so that the operator of the commercial area has the right to, to determine what signs go on there, not, and, and it's not the individual stores in there that have, it's the tenant, it's the owner of the, the PUD that has, that tells the renters what signage is going in there. Is that coming up?
Well, that's coming up. He raised an interesting point, Mr. Scanlon. I know you don't have the exact numbers, but as a rule of thumb, what percentage of Currituck sales taxes collected on the outer banks? I saw that look of, he's got to be kidding.
Yeah, there's, the way it's reported back to the state, it is, geographically, it does not differentiate.
Okay.
So we have really no way of telling that.
The cars affect the sales taxes, is that a separate category?
It certainly would have some impact on it.
Okay, go ahead.
What you can see from the, the movie theater and the, sideways, but you want to turn that, Ben? And these signs have all been sold and, or leased to these people, and that takes up the signage. They could just as well put on this sign all of the businesses that are in there, but they don't. They've, they've, you know, the movie theater takes up a huge portion of sign, which could, you know, you could have logos for 10 businesses on there, which the, the owner of the PUD has chosen not to do. The second slide is Timbuktu, and you can see from this that Timbuktu has on their interior sign, they've got all the businesses that are listed, and, and there's, and the other sign over here, Timbuktu, is just advertising the, and the, Timbuktu as a, as a, as a business, I mean, as a, as a whole.
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
He took his wife's time, too. That's six minutes?
Yes.
Finish up, please.
I'll do my time.
Okay, and you are?
Kathy Schultz.
Kathy Schultz, okay.
Okay, the next slide is Corolla Lights. And you can see there, they have, they have listed the businesses in Corolla Light. And, and so, this is the individual choice of the, of the PUD owner, though. And the last one is the Corolla Village. Now, the Corolla Village has a special law, a special regulation that allows them to have this sign. Doug Twitty made this sign on 12, so that the businesses that are back in the village can be seen, or, or people will go back in there, and that's, that's an off-premise sign that has special allowance. But if you drive down 12 now, there's probably, I would just guess, 40 or 50 signs, sandwich board signs out in front of, of Timbuktu, and you can't read any of them. You, you probably have less than two seconds to, to read any one of those signs, so they're, they're totally not visible at all. And, and like we said before, we don't want to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. And, and sandwich board signs, a few of them don't look really junk, but when there's just a bunch of them, I mean, if you drive through Duck and you try to find something, you say, "Oh, I want to go to ABC Pizza," and you don't know where it is, and you're looking for the sign to find it, even with the big signs that they have, you're not going to find it because you're going through at 25 miles an hour there. We're going at 35 and 45 miles an hour through Corolla, and, and so you're just not, it's totally ineffective to be able to look for a sign and then go do some business from that sign. And, and, you know, there was, the person before me was saying that, "If you want to find something, this is what I do. I just go like that, and it, and push a button, and it tells me where all the, all the restaurants are, where all the, whatever I want in there, tells me in a second, it actually makes a map, and I can go right to it." And, and so that's the modern day age, and the businesses are going to have to adapt to that. And, and sign boards, they want sign boards because they're cheap. It's a one-time expense, and it's out there, but there's a lot of drawbacks to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doug Schmoyer?
My name is Doug Schmoyer. I'm 111 Long Point Circle, Powell's Point. Listening to this, and, and last year I came back to Corolla to open my dream, my restaurant, The Flying Dutchman at the South entrance to the Currituck Club. I worked in Corolla since 1993. I left Corolla to go to Raleigh with J.K.'s restaurant, where we got pushed out by Ruth Chris, the big boy. And I had the opportunity to come back to Corolla to try my dream. I have three little boys at home, a wonderful wife, and my location is back behind the ABC Liquor Store. I'm trying to do a family-style restaurant. And the best marketing I had last year, in my first summer open, August, my mom came down to help me out. She walked the beach and handed out my menus to people. And 80% of the people that came in my restaurant probably said, "I met your mom. I met your mom." If I were able to have a sandwich board just on the side of the road, and I have one, and you saw it, because mine's the one with the cinder blocks on it, because of two reasons. One, it got stolen already once this summer, and it is an expense, and when you're trying to start a business, any little expense hurts. So I did put cinder blocks on because there's The Flying Dutchman of Lebanon Valley up in Pennsylvania, and I'm sure it was college kids that stole my sign, because it was a prank. But it cost me money, and I did put cinder blocks on it. I've stayed open all year long because I lived in Corolla for seven years through the winters. And, you know, that sign blown down, that they showed you the picture of, yeah, I was up there the next day, and I put it back up, and I have that cinder block on there just for that reason, so it won't blow down. And I didn't realize that was part of the ordinance, and I'm sorry, I apologize. But, you know, my card, I, my sign looks a lot like my card, a lot like my menu that goes out there. So I know people, when you drive by it, you can't read it, it says comfort food, coastal cuisine, family-friendly, but it has the same pattern that I keep going, and people all summer say, "You can't find it, you're so hard to find." Since September, when I was able to put it, or October, because I put it out a little too early, I didn't know the ordinance, I thought it started after Labor Day. First year I learned, I got told by Ms. Newbern, who I enjoy. She came by and told me, and we got it back in. But once it got out there, people could find me. You know, I try to put out a quality product. There's been a lot of talk around town that I'm doing things right. All I'm asking is, you know, my, my spot's hard, Timbuktu's hard. I worked at Brew Through, I worked Corolla Light, drove Trolley. This year, this past year, I can tell you, we've got a lot of people that came to Corolla for the first time this past year. A lot of people that said, "Hey, I rented my house two weeks ago because I got a good deal on it." I told those people, "Don't get used to that, because Corolla will come back to what it was, where houses are rented year after year by the same people." But at this time, they're, you know, there are new people in our town, and if we can't get our word out that, at least where our sign, where our place is, and, I mean, I think being able to have it out all summer, and I'm really hoping this year that a lot of talk about it around town, that people at least be able to say, "Yeah, he's down that way." All I'd love to do is have a sandwich board by the road, just to, so they can see, so they can see my, my logo, catch it, and say, "Hey, that's where it is." That's all I'm, I'm asking for, and I'd appreciate if, if we could think about that. I would love to stay in Currituck County, I'll tell you right now. I have, my oldest son is in kindergarten at Jarvisburg, and you guys done a wonderful job there. My, my boy loves to go to school, and, and I would love to stay here in Currituck County, so, all, that's all I'm asking for, is a little help to help bring in business, because I know it does. I saw it happen October, when I was able to put my sandwich board out, that people actually said, they saw my sign on the road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Edson?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Vicki Edson. I own Bacchus Wine &amp; Cheese in Corolla, 891 Albacore Street. We've been the owners of Bacchus for seven years, but the store has been in the same location with the same name for over 19 years. From an advertising standpoint, I agree with Alicia, we do a lot of print advertising. We have tried TV, we've tried radio, we've tried every aspect that we can. Every year, we have people saying that they've had difficulty finding us. We've had people say that we've come to the outer banks on vacation for the last eight to 10 years, "We didn't know that you were here." So no matter what kind of advertising you're doing, somehow you never seem to get to everyone. But the expectation from a business owner is to do everything that you possibly can within your power to get your name out in front of your possible customers. The, the county noted, we have a very short period of time in which to make our money, 17 weeks. And in that 17 weeks, we have to pay our lease or our mortgage for 12 months, pay all of our people, and hopefully take a couple of pennies home to take care of our own mortgage. So with all of that in mind, we need as much exposure as we possibly can have. My store is located on Albacore Street. I do not have visibility from NC-12. Any kind of visibility that I can get, including a sandwich board, would be appreciated. And I thank you for the time tonight, and hope that you'll vote our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Painter?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Mike Painter. I reside at 209 Eagle Creek Road in Mooyam. I'm here this evening as chairman of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce to support our text amendment to allow the display of sandwich board and real estate signs in Corolla year As you know, under the current ordinance, these signs are allowed from October to May, but they're not allowed at a time when businesses conduct the majority of their sales. At first, this seems backwards, but I understand that this issue was not addressed at the last ordinance rewrite. I think you would agree that the use of signs in the off-season has been implemented without incident regarding safety and without sacrificing the aesthetic quality of Corolla, though I recognize that there are those who may disagree. There's been a great deal of discussion on what may happen if this amendment were to pass, but I wanted to point, point out a couple of things that we know. One, this is the most challenging economy nationally and locally that we've seen probably in our lifetime. Currituck County, specifically Corolla, is a tourist destination. Outside of government and schools, there are very few jobs in the county that do not benefit from travel and tourism. The Currituck Economic Development Marketing Plan, a report provided by the consultant Lawrence Wood Park, states, "The county currently benefits from a robust tourism industry centered in the Corolla area that is the economic engine for the region. State and local taxes generated $11 million in revenue in 2007, and tourism's total economic impact for that year in Currituck is estimated $120 million." I think we've seen how that's declined since then. It is the chamber's position that the very businesses that are asking for support are the same businesses that contribute to this robust economic engine. Two, in 2009, occupancy was up over the prior year in Currituck County. Occupancy was... Occupancy was down over the prior year in Dare County, yet retail sales were down in Currituck County, and retail sales were up in Dare County. Our tourism department should be commended for their efforts through marketing and advertising to get visitors to our county. Now we have an opportunity to help our retail businesses keep more revenue in this county. We realize that this amendment is not a permanent solution to this economy, nor will it in and of itself solve problems facing small business owners today, but we feel that any opportunity that the county can take to assist business should be pursued. If the Board of Commissioners will allow this amendment, the planning department will be able to compare the data with last year, which will assist them as they work to develop a comprehensive sign ordinance for the county. I believe this board and other organizations have struggled to find ways that will provide an immediate impact for business, and I believe this is one way that will help. If we do nothing, we most likely will have similar results. But if we act now, we may be able to assist our local businesses this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Schultz?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Bob Schultz. I live at 964 Sunset Crescent in Corolla, North Carolina. I'd like to make two quick points this evening, okay? The first one is, I totally agree with the young lady from the Chamber of Commerce, okay, that Dare County doesn't have sandwich boards, and their economy and their business are doing fine. We in Corolla have sign boards, and ours isn't doing as well. Therefore, I don't think we need the sign boards. Okay? I agree with her, you know, and she's right. Okay, the other point is, people say, oh, the sign boards let me know that the business is open. There's been many, many times, okay, the sign boards have been up, I've gone to a business, and the business is closed. And I find it extremely frustrating as a resident, okay? I can only imagine how the tourists would feel if they did the same thing. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mike Flores?
Good evening. My name is Mike Flores, and I live at 40 Duckwoods Drive, Southern Shores, and I have a business and several businesses in Point Harbor that, with my wife and daughter and one of my own. I just wanted to say that the argument about the use of sandwich boards not being, or being inconsistent with the land use plan is not real clear to me. But one of the things that is clear is that business is tough, and especially for a small, you know, small business and family-owned businesses, it's very tough. The revenues that are earned during the boom times are needed to offset the tough times, if they make it that far. And small business does not have the marketing dollars that the larger competitors have. So, you know, we're up against tough competition from the big boys, and so the small business owner needs every resource at their disposal to market their products, services, or wares. So that's really all I have to say, but thank you. I support the chamber's position. And I forgot to add that I'm also a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, too, so thank you.
Thank you. Karen Ish?
Karen Ish, 112 Teal Drive in Currituck on Bells Island. My husband and I also own an investment rental property in Corolla, and I'd like to submit to you that our rental house is as much a business as any restaurant or store over there. We have the same 17 weeks to make our year's worth of mortgage payments, utility payments, and take care of all the wear and tear and expenses that go into that home. We have to attract customers who pay hotel and occupancy tax, and those customers are the ones who shop in the stores and eat in the restaurants. Our visitors travel a long distance, they sit in 20-mile traffic jams, and they pay premium dollar to vacation in a place that is upscale and unspoiled. Unfortunately, there is nothing that can be done to a sandwich sign to make it upscale or to help it enhance its surroundings. There is nothing about a cluttered field of tacky sandwich boards that says luxury. If vacationers want tacky, there are plenty of other places that are closer and cheaper. If they decide they want to go to Kill Double Hills, or Ocean City, or Myrtle Beach, they're not shopping in our stores, or eating in our restaurants, or paying my mortgage. They need to, we need to keep Corolla as an upscale destination, and I'm asking you to do that and to keep it from just becoming another tacky tourist trap. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Beecher?
Good evening. Marie Beecher, 506 Meadow Lane, Corolla. With all due respect to the business people who have come tonight, and to the Chamber of Commerce, I have to, I just would like to comment that I think more can be done using, as Alicia said, using the Internet advertising. I can think of 100 ways, just sitting there, listening to the presentations, 100 ways that you can attract customers to come in. And I'd be very happy to sit and give my thinking. I don't think it's rocket science. Doug has, from Flying Dutchman, he's reached out to the full-time community. He's used his venue for various organizations to have our meetings and so on, and I commend him for that. I don't want to pick and choose, but there are certain businesses who realize that we live there all year, and they reach out to us, giving us discounts during the off-season to attract people there, and then those, that word of mouth goes to the renters. We, on the, people who rent, recommend to, on their websites for their homes, the businesses who are cooperative with them. So if anyone thinks that a tacky sandwich board is going to draw in a customer, as Mr. Weemer said, going by and checking it fastest could be, if they're depending on that for their business's livelihood, I feel very, very sorry for them, because some of the signs are so ugly that automatically the brain shuts down. And I can't see it as anything that's viable in our community. Thank you very much.
I have a question for the chambers. Does it address what the signs look like in here, other than it just says, let me find it here?
The existing ordinance just states that they have to be professionally made.
Okay, how, what, how do we designate professionally made? Because, I'm gonna be honest with you, I went over there this weekend just to take a slow ride through Corolla, and I looked at some of the sandwich boards. Some of them were nice. Some of them looked like my second-grade child had done them. But I will have to say this, that The Flying Dutchman Restaurant, because of his sandwich board, I found out where his restaurant was and found another restaurant, as well as the seafood market back there, because the sign out front is so small that you can't see anything. So is, through the sign ordinance as it exists now, can that sign be larger, the one out front at the Currituck Club, or is it?
Yes.
Destined to be, I mean, I had to literally pull in the driveway over there by the visitor center, roll the window down, and look to see what was in there, because you can't see it riding by.
Well, actually, statistically, it'd have to be 98 square feet, which isn't allowed over there, so there wouldn't have been any signs at all.
So, I want to talk about the aesthetics of it before we move on.
Mr. Chairman, I bring you to bullet number three in the ordinance. It doesn't have to be professionally made, it has to be professional in appearance. And I understand that is a very subjective argument, but item three addresses the style of the sign.
Well, I guess that's subjective, because some of them think that, to have them, may think they're professional in appearance, and they're not. So...
And I agree with that. That item is not what the amendment is addressing. Our amendment is addressing just the time restrictions. The item three, as far as how they look, is how it is now, and that was what the Sign Ordinance Committee put forth several years ago. That, as we've stated, is something that the chamber is interested in working with, the planning department, on working, redoing the whole sign ordinance, whether it's just for Corolla or mainland as well, so...
We don't think that this is the answer to the Corolla advertising issue, but for what we can do right now in this economy that may have an impact, and it's something that we can compare with past data and information that we receive, now would be an ideal opportunity to get through this season. And as this board, I think, has asked, requested, and we're, the chamber is in agreement, working with the staff and the planning board, to take a look at the sign ordinance as a whole.
Okay, I just wanted to know about the appearance, because I did go over there this weekend, and some of them should have been picked up and thrown in the back of a pickup truck.
And I think those should be addressed.
Does staff have the wherewithal, even if whatever happens to this, does the staff have the wherewithal to address that in the time that they're allowed?
The standard is so subjective, honestly, that it's very difficult to enforce, because you end up in an argument with every individual sandwich board sign about what's professional versus what's not. It's just a difficult, it's a difficult provision to enforce, because it is so subjective.
Mr. Chairman, I have another compliance issue, too, and they're pointing out the fact that oftentimes, you know, the signs are not supposed to be out unless the business is open, and that's not the case. They just leave them out there. I feel like there should be, you know, some method of policing that. If they're going to have the sign out, the business should be open and providing the service.
Okay. I have, is there two Gary Smiths here? You just signed up twice. Okay. And Mr. Smith is the last person we have signed up, so I'm gonna call him, Mr. Smith.
Mr. O'Neill, I have a presentation, so do I have three minutes, because I signed up twice? Do I get six, or can I get 12?
You got a three-minute presentation.
Okay, I'll talk fast, thank you.
Oh, there's nobody else to give you any time.
Okay, how about the other Gary Smith?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
If he'll raise his hand, we'll see.
Okay, thank you.
We say, vote early and vote often, too.
Yeah, okay. I'll keep them at three minutes. Anybody that came, that is a Corolla business person that came today, that is for the, for the signs to be out all summer long, please stand up. Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the people that came. I put a quick, what did I put out real quick? I put out a petition. As busy as I am trying to run my own business, went around, I had 41 businesses sign the petition that said that they're for it. Of those that I am in support of the amendment, allowing sandwich board signs to be displayed all year. Ben, do I just hit this little button here?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay. Of those 41 businesses, 73% of the owners live in Corolla. Of those 41 business owners in Corolla, they hire approximately 360 employees. Okay, that's about, I think if you do your math real quick, that's about eight people per business that they hire. Again, that is not all the businesses in the community. Those are the only ones that I had a chance to go around and get. I also drove up and down Corolla. There's 13 miles from the county line, from the Dare-Currituck County line, all the way up to where the road ends, up on Swan Beach. That's 13 miles long. The decision that you're voting on tonight will only impact about, like Shannon said, about 8% of the road fundage in Corolla. I wanted to go over, I also drove through each of the centers, and have a quick recap on the centers, because I know there was some questions about that. The first commercial area is south of the Currituck Club. In there, there's approximately 14 shops. Only five, at the very best, have road fundage visibility. I think Doug's situation with The Flying Dutchman is very parallel to Metropolis, to the seafood store there, to two real estate companies that are there. From there, in Timbuktu, I know somebody, Ben, how many people, how many shops did we think we had at Timbuktu?
Sixty.
Sixty. We do not have 60 shops at Timbuktu.
Ladies have 60 on plan, so...
Sixty on plan.
There are going to be 60 open, if something combined, there's potential to be...
There's 37 shops in Timbuktu. Timbuktu, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, there, no shop faces the road. All the stores either face into each other or face towards the sound. There are about eight shops that have their signs on the railing there, but no shop has roadside visibility there. Monterey Plaza, where I have my store at, there's 30 shops there. Only 10 of those stores have direct roadside visibility. All the rest of the stores, you have to pull into the shopping center to see what there are. Corolla Light Town Center has about 18 shops. Many of them have no roadside visibility from Route 12, and only eight, only six of the shops have visibility from the road. And of course, we've been talking about it, all the shops in Old Town, in Old Corolla Village, are one block off from Route 12, and they have zero visibility from Route 12. Is there any questions that I can answer about this?
Any commissioners having questions for Mr. Smith?
Okay, just a couple of quick recap notes. I think we're all in agreement that Corolla is a resort community. Our job's to entertain the people that come there. We're having, we've having different discussions about the economy and revenues. I had four shops last year. I hired a total of 15 employees. I've down, I closed three of those stores. We're only behind about 10 people at the very most. My retail sales were down by 40%. Yes, there is a huge downturn in the retail economy in Corolla, and that's been the experience from my side. Paul, Mr. O'Neill?
Need you to wrap it up.
Is that it? Okay. I'm done.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is everyone I had signed up for the public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions or comments of any of the presenters or the staff? Hearing none, I'll close the public. Yes, sir?
Mr. Woody. Under what method could we allow something to go through for this summer? And then, how much time do you perceive it's going to take before your sign committee will be up and running and can go to this area and visit this area and come up with something concrete?
To answer your first question, you can allow an ordinance for, I suppose, as long as you want, or you can put some kind of ending clause or expiration clause on it, and we'll get the attorney to make sure of that. But I don't see why, you could do that if you wanted to. To answer your second question, letters go out this week to potential members of the sign committee. We're not going to have 30 people, we're going to have 10, try to keep it more manageable. There'll be four business representatives, four citizens, and one from the ED Board, and one from the planning board. How long that takes, it just depends on the dynamics of the discussion in the committee. Sometimes sign ordinances can take two, three, four years, and I don't think anybody wants to do that again, so I'm optimistic we can do it in a year to 18 months.
Is your plan to, have you looked in any geographical area yet as to where you're going to start, or, I mean, the mainland, the Outer Banks?
Probably try to do it all together. That would be the initial plan, unless the board directs us to do it otherwise.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
No, I mean, this was coming up tonight. I did some research also, and typed in effectiveness of sandwich board signs, and used Internet in places that have historically banned sandwich board signs, like Palm Springs, California, Milton, South Carolina, Smithfield, Virginia, Eugene, Oregon, Chattanooga, Tennessee, East Hampton, Massachusetts, and Annapolis, Maryland, have all... Eugene, Oregon, Chattanooga, Tennessee, East Hampton, Massachusetts, and Annapolis, Maryland have all looked at it and have changed their thinking on it because the main reason they've done it is the economy that they are stating, that they need to do something to help their businesses. I asked Mr. Woody the question of what was the purpose of the land use plan? And the purpose of the land use plan is to enhance or improve or maintain quality of life. And if we don't do what we can do to try to help our businesses, we're not following through with the mission of the land use plan. I'm like Mr. Idlet has said here tonight, I think maybe this is something we can look at and try on a temporary basis and see if it helps our businesses. Because I've heard it mentioned they could get some of the billboards. Well, you're talking about $2,000 a month rental on a billboard on the mainland of Currituck. And there's not too many startup businesses that can afford a $2,000 a month and you have to sign a year's contract. They don't have month of a month rentals on billboards. So I think we need to look at this very seriously. And I just threw this information out there because we're not the only one in this situation. Communities all over this country are looking at it, trying to help businesses. Thank you.
All right. We'll close the public hearing and ask the board for an action.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in this overwhelming silence, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this amendment on a temporary basis. And that basis will be, I would like to see it until Mr. Woody's committee has come up with an alternative suggestion for an ordinance to work with. But I would just like to put a note in here that any of you people make the court look tacky with those signs, I'm going to send my wife over there. You're going to answer to her because she wants to look nice.
I have a motion. I have a second discussion.
If I may suggest that if you're going to intend to place a sunset clause in this particular motion, that you set a definitive date.
Mr. Woody, when's your committee going to be ready?
Two years.
12 to 18 months, but if the board wants to do something temporary, I would recommend setting a date. At that date, we can report back to you and hopefully tell you what our status are.
Okay, I'd like to do is I'd like to go ahead and just do it for this season only then, so that we can get some feedback regarding the sales tax figures and see if it actually has an effect.
February 1st, 2011?
Well, as long as we get them through the season when they're normally up there.
October 1st would be the typical.
October 1st, yeah.
And have a report to us, no later than February 1st.
Okay. Good. Did you get all that?
Good. Could I, if this is going to go through, could I add a friendly amendment to this stating that the signs have to be professionally done? Can we add that to that, Mr. McCray?
Well, the ordinance already requires that they are professional in appearance.
But we just had 10 minutes worth of discussion about that subjective.
How can we narrow that down?
I'm of the opinion that that might be a substantive change such that a public hearing would be necessary on that issue. So it would not be appropriate at this point to make that kind of amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. Well, I'll, I just want to add this comment that if, if this does pass and the businesses do not police themselves and they put a bunch of tacky stuff up there, this is going to go right back on the agenda, real quick, by probably any of, any of the number of us commissioners. So if this does in fact pass, the chamber and business community needs to police themselves. And some of the signs we saw up there with the paint peeling off and stuff like that, that's just not acceptable, regardless of what the ordinance says. Because we can sunset it ahead of the end of the season. So I think that is a fair expectation from the business community if this does pass. Does anybody in the business community disagree with that?
No, I think that's, that's fair.
Absolutely fair.
Absolutely fair.
Okay.
Committee judge the signs. I mean, could you use, they're putting a committee together with business and can they?
I would, I would prefer on the code enforcement officer to do that, and she will, and she will be more aggressive in enforcing that ordinance to the best of her ability.
And I think if you were listed as a chipped or a chipped sign or a damaged sign in any way as being part of what's required, I think that's more than fair.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
If it can come from the board. I just wanted to say that I'm not voting for this motion. I have respect for both sides. I understand, had a small business off the road, could not get anybody to see the sign because of the two bushes or the two trees that the person that we rent from would not take down. So that was one deterrent, plus we were well off the road. So business was better when my husband or myself or my children went on the road front to let people know where we are. But also out of respect for all the people who showed up, who sat on that committee for almost four years to come to us with this ordinance, to come make an amendment in one night, and by the planning staff and the planning board, that it be denied, I am voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries.
And I'd like to address one more point if I might.
Yes, sir.
Kind of a post discussion. I absolutely agree with Ms. Taylor. The folks who spent the four years putting this ordinance together did a good job at it. And we have a great deal of respect for that. If it were not for the extraordinary circumstances that we're experiencing right now that are really taking our businesses away from us in this county, we would not make an exception for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
Being since we are, a lot of the presentation tonight was quoting the Randall marketing study, I'd like to just put a plug in for our travel and tourism department. First of all, the study was done prior to our opening of the Moyoc Welcome Center. And in fact, part of the study was used as a basis to acquire that facility. It is open now. In the 19 days of April, we've already had 2,200 people that have gone through that. It is an excellent opportunity for all of our businesses in the entire Curta County as well as in Corolla to place their advertisement, their menus, et cetera, in that facility as well as the one in Corolla. We actually have a program in place right now if a business cannot afford to provide a pamphlet or brochure of their own that we will assist them in preparing at least some kind of a handout and a localized map to help identify that facility. The tourism department also has just completed a, it's not really an app, but we heard a lot of conversations tonight about what the electronic internet can do. It is a miniature program of the tourism website that allows folks that have PDAs, telephones, various electronic devices to get an abbreviated format of our website, which in and of itself promotes the various different shopping and dining and retail opportunities on the Outer Banks. So I would, taking the opportunity to promote our tourism department, any of the businesses of Curta County should make sure they contact our tourism department to get the various different opportunities that they provide to help market and promote their businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. This item is over. If we're moving to the next item. Item five, consideration in action, PBO 5-13 Kitty Hawk Water Sports Incorporated. Renewal of special use permit to operate a privately owned water-related recreational rental activity business located at Buck Island, Timbuktu. Commercial area, tax map 116D, parcel nine, Fruitville, Outer Banks Township. Mr. McCray.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How about? The meeting is continuing, please.
Let me first explain it. This, this matters a little bit, well, since you have some witnesses prepared to be sworn in, I'll suggest, first of all, that you swear in anyone that intends to present any evidence during the course of this special use permit hearing.
Okay, anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or against this item? Mr. Meredith, you wish to be sworn in?
I mean, if someone asks me a question, I would answer, but I don't.
You got to be sworn in.
You got to be sworn in to talk.
I wasn't going to speak, but let's spoken to, but just in case.
All right, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is a special use permit. It's different than the last matter that was just before the Board of Commissioners, and that that was a legislative matter. And the Board of Commissioners could consider any comments, documents, or information that deemed advisable in making that decision. This is a quasi judicial position, decision or situation, which means that the Board of Commissioners sits as a judge, the finder of fact, just like in a court of law, and therefore you must make your decision based upon competent material and substantive evidence that's presented during the course of this proceeding. The applicant has due process, certain due process rights. The first of those has already occurred in that any person that intends to present any evidence to be considered by this board in rendering this decision must be under oath. Secondly, the applicant has the opportunity to question and cross-examine any witnesses and has the opportunity to rebut any evidence that might be presented in opposition to their application. There's also the opportunity, or it should be understood, that the burden of proof is upon the applicant. But once the applicant meets that burden of proof to your satisfaction, that they've met the requirements of the ordinance and other things that you must consider making your decision, then the burden shifts to those who may be in opposition to the application, and they must likewise put on similar type of evidence to support their opposition. Having said that, then, the evidentiary phase of the hearing is now open, and I'll ask Mr. Woody to present the staff analysis.
Thank you. This request is a renewal of a special use permit. This is Kitty Hawk Water Sports, which is located in Timbuktu Shopping Center, in the Buck Island PUD, in the Corolla area. On the aerial photograph, you can see Timbuktu labeled there. Previously, the special use permit for this property was first issued in March of 1998. At that time, it was issued to construct a 400 square foot building and provide water sports lessons, rental equipment, which includes kayaks, sailboats, wave runners, parasailing, and windsurfing, and boat tours. The original S U P was valid for two years and required a renewal. That permit was renewed in January of 1990, or excuse me, and was renewed in 2000 with a five-year requirement for renewal. And it was again renewed in 2005 with another five-year requirement. So we're here today for the five-year renewal. The permit does have conditions included in it. Those are obviously carryover to this permit renewal. I'll go through those real quickly, and they're in your staff report. Hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to dusk for motorized equipment. Equipment shall be allowed to be stored and docked at the pier overnight. Jet ski operations shall not be allowed between November 1st and April 1st. Operations will not be permitted during the fourth day duck and geese hunting period in October. Jet skis should only be operated in buoyed areas north of the pier. No temporary or permanent signage, except with an approved sign permit, shall be permitted with this use. And finally, the special use permit should be valid for a period of five years. If that condition remained, that would bring this back in 2015. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Any members of the board have a question for Mr. Woody?
I have one. I just want to know in the past five years, have there been any violations with the special use permit?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Is there any method by which we could revoke the special use permit were there to be violations prior to the five years?
You would have, well, obviously, the easiest way is if they violated one of their conditions, and yes, you could revoke it.
Okay, so then the five-year period really isn't a necessity. It's just putting them through the routine every five years.
And perhaps it would allow you to ask any conditions if, or questions if any conditions change, or it allows them the opportunity to expand or contract their business. But no, you can violate it without the expiration, without the time, or you can revoke the permit regardless of the time limit if they violate a condition.
Chairman, I move for approval.
I'm going to close the public hearing first.
Let's close it. Let's go ahead.
Let me ask you any other questions for Mr. Woody?
Does anyone have any questions?
If not, does applicant have any questions for Mr. Woody based on his presentation?
No, except he took my whole speech, but that's all right.
Well, then, now, if there are no further questions, then the applicant may present. I'm sorry.
Mr. Idlet has one for the applicant.
Okay, well, if we first let the applicant present whatever the case they'd like to present at this point.
Again.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Tom Franchi. I'm an engineer, and I've been asked to help Kitty Hawk Water Sports pursue this permit. And I have, I've been out to the site, looked it over. It looks very good. All right, it's in very good conformance in just about every aspect that I can think of. Again, it's my understanding, while I'm not an expert on the subject, that there have been no complaints for the 10-plus years that this business has been in operation, seem to get along well with all the neighbors, and we request that the permit be renewed.
Any commissioners have a question for the applicant? Now, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Where do you launch your, where do you launch your kayaks and that type of stuff? Where's the jet skis all kept?
I'd have kept on a dock. You can see that, this picture shows it all. That's where almost all the boats are operated, except there's some paddle boats that stay up in a pond.
Do you, do you have regulations that ensure that the people who rent jet skis conform to the, I guess it's wildlife resources? 100 yards from the, was it 100 yards from the, from the shoreline?
In the state law, yeah, there's appropriate signage and the life jackets are there. And the operator, Mr. Meredith, is a licensed captain in his own right. And again, it's, it's a pretty first-class operation.
Does someone stay there all the time in case someone gets in trouble or someone has an accident or? Two, two jet skis run together and somebody's unconscious. Is there someone there to?
I'm sure that's the case, but I'm going to let Mr. Meredith come in.
Yeah, I have somebody on the water.
You can come up to the.
Anytime there's, there's a jet skis out, we have someone.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Meredith, 4805 Fistlane Kitty Hawk. Anytime there's jet skis out there, we have someone on the water with them.
And you have them conform to the state requirements as far as?
Yeah, and then some more than likely, yeah. And have a good relationship with all the wildlife officers up there. Come and check on us.
They can change quick, but then.
Yeah, well, I mean, they come and check on us a couple of times a year, and you know, anything they ask, we do.
Any other questions for the applicant from members of the board?
No, that's all I wanted to know.
All right. So you have nothing else from the applicant?
No, I have no further comments.
Is there anyone else who has not presented any evidence up to this point that would like to do so at this time? See, no one. The evidentiary phase is closed, Mr. Chairman.
Move for approval.
Second.
I'll now close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Well, don't say no public hearing. It's consideration. There is no public hearing here.
Well, the evidentiary phase acts like that.
Is a public hearing, yeah.
It's a consideration.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Gregory and a second from Commissioner Idlet. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item six, appointment to Whalehead Stormwater Drainage Service. District, I would like time to look at that a little bit more.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
And move that we table this until we have a chance to look at the list and discuss the applicants.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item seven is consent agenda.
It's a move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Commissioners report. Commissioner Gregory? Commissioner Etheridge? Commissioner Idlet?
Yeah, I have one thing. You know, you and I asked two, three meetings ago about contacting NC DOT, about the road situation on Water Lily Road as well as.
Yes, sir.
Idlet Road, I mean, Idlet.
North Island.
Galway.
Yes, sir.
This last northeaster was reported to me, and I went and looked at it. The northeast wind, the tide was so high, it washed up over top of the rip route.
Yeah.
Down behind the fabric that's there and is undermining, starting to undermine the road. I made a call to our DOT folks today, and he assured me to be available the next two or three days to look at that. So, but I would like for us to go ahead and get that letter.
Yeah, I have not seen a copy of that letter we requested. Has it in fact been sent?
Yes, sir, it has. I'll get you a copy.
Please, whenever we send a letter, copy the board. I know it's a little bit extra to get it to all of us, but please copy us. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I did let off a mention about the lights at the Moyoc Library. Be sure that they've been ordered, the lights and the signs coming in. They have been ordered, haven't they, Dan? Driveway out on the driveway at the Moyoc, new Moyoc Library.
Yes, sir, we're waiting for, North Carolina Power actually come back and give you a quote on each of the locations. We have not received their response back on that, but the sign for Tulsa Creek Road has been ordered, and we're waiting for that to be delivered and installed.
Well, we need to send another letter to them because you can't, you cannot see how to get in that driveway at night. You really can't. You have to search for it.
If it's flooded, that could be dangerous.
There are two or three of those ladies all night, so they like to run over getting in, getting in and out there and all. It's a bad place. It really needs to be put up.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rohr?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen out there listening, if you haven't noticed, this week is. is Bike Week. You've probably seen the DOT signs, but please be careful, there's motorcycles everywhere. And going into the weekend, the chamber didn't mention it when they were here, but they've got a golf tournament on Friday, which I'm sure they'd like your participation in. And the crawl is Saturday. I don't think we'll have a half million people here, but I hope we have a bunch. And then it's gonna be a big weekend for everybody involved, so just be careful when you're out there driving, if you've got to go anywhere, allow some extra time, because there's gonna be a lot of people that don't live here, driving on our highways, looking for things, and probably stopping suddenly.
Two things real quick, Janet and I, or Ms. Taylor, let me be proper. Ms. Taylor and I serve on the COA Board of Trustees. We welcomed our new president, Ms. Candy Determer, at our last meeting last week, and we are going to be scheduling some time of her coming over here and spending a little bit of time with the commissioners and the school board and staff, and introducing her to our community. And the second thing is the second Monday in May, the Board of Commissioners will be going to Corolla for a local government meeting, as Mr. Idlet has talked to me about, and we'll be going, the second Monday in May, we promised the folks over there we'd come over and sit down, so second Monday in May, y'all go ahead and mark your calendar, you got plenty of time to cancel any other plans.
After tonight, we're gonna have.
Yeah, it's gonna be after the side ordinance, right.
And next, we have County Manager's Report.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, and hearing that, we need to go into closed session according to GS 143-318.11. Three to consult with an attorney, with our attorney, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
It's a move.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.